Good evening, welcome to the council meetings of December nineteenth, the last meeting of the year. It's called order. Anyone out in the audience needs amplifying headphones, 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 please raise your hand. All right, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance, everybody please rise.
Pledge of allegiance, super glad. And to their call for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Council member Bowden. Council member Sherman here. Council member Gutierrez. Mayor Nesko. Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Council member McDowell, present. And council member Peterson.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does council have any late changes to the agenda? Council have any board reports to share?
Well, I have something to share real quick. Okay. Some of us went down to Longview yesterday and visited the pallet. What do you call it, pallet?
Pallet shelter, yes.
Pallet shelter. Totally different than what I thought it was. I was very impressed, something that we're looking at for the city of Shelton. And I, it was just totally different. So thank you, Mark, for dragging us down there and letting us see what was going on and very well organized, very clean, yeah. Been there about a year and it just looks, it looks great. I got to talk to one of the ladies that lived there and she's, she loves it there. She's been there a year and she feels safe. She said she did not feel safe on the streets, but she feels safe there. So that's a roof over their head and, and safety is two important things for those, for the individuals that live there. So anyway, that's my two, my idea on it for the city.
Any other board report to share? I like to take this opportunity to, to say goodbye and to thank three council members that are leaving us. This is their last meeting. I've learned a lot from all three of you, different things. And thank you, Deidre and Kathy and James for, for your service for four years, four years and eight years for Kathy. And we have little cupcakes for you guys. And then afterwards, we're gonna have some cupcakes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, an absolute pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
No handshake. I'll give James a handshake. Does any of the council like to address them and would like to address us?
I just wanted to say for the past two years, thank you for welcoming me to the commission, to the board of our city council. And I've learned from each and every one of you. And we've had really good conversations and we've, we've nonpartisinally done the best for our city. And I think that when we, when we dropped that and we got a lot done, so thank you very much for your service and it's a really hard job. And thank you for carrying it up to run and to put your efforts into it. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the council. We worked real well together, I believe. We've had our negative, you know, I, I thoughts of different things, the way we wanted it, but we all seem to come together and make a decent decision. It's been eight years and that's a long time, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. Some, some of the minutes I haven't enjoyed, but the majority of them I have and I'm thankful for the people in the city, in the administration, in this building that I've gotten to personally know. Thank you very much.
What else?
I've learned a lot from everyone here. So thank you so much for everything and your time and your guidance. Because the first year when you're doing this, if you've never done anything government before, you have no idea what's going on. And so by sitting here and watching people have been here for a while and listening, it helps you understand what's going on. And so your first year, you're not making real decisions, you're learning, you're absorbing. And I appreciate all of you for giving us that opportunity to learn.
Thank you.
No. Do you have any comments?
I'll save those for manager report.
All right.
If you don't mind.
Okay. Well, then moving on, has anyone reviewed the items on our consent agenda? Maybe we have a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and publish.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next is an agenda, is a presentation for, from finance director Mike Giddens.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. We have the October monthly financial report to present tonight and I just want to say that, you know, we've come a long ways with our finances, particularly in the general fund when, from where we were looking at this about 10 months ago. We've done a lot of hard work and you'll see some of the changes, you know, we have the benefit of really being able to see where we're at more clearly at this point in the fiscal year. So even though we're presenting or preparing this for the month of October, we're doing so in late November. And so we have the benefit of really looking at our revenues and knowing where our expenditures are, which helps us a lot with this forecast. So the October report puts us at eighty-three percent of the fiscal year. In other words, if everything were even, our revenue would be at eighty-three percent received, our expenditures would be at eighty-three percent. We know that's not how everything lays out. Some things we can look at that way, but certainly not everything. On this page, under our 2023 estimated actual, I just want to pause for a minute and have you look at that revenue and expenditure, because that's one of the biggest things for this general fund report where the revenue is exceeding the expenditures. And that's due to a lot of hard work. And as we've mentioned in a staff presentation earlier today, it didn't come certainly without some pain because we reduced staff, we eliminated some positions. We've worked really hard to bring this in line because that's with no new revenue this year. But that's something that I just want to commend all city staff for. And certainly you as the council for supporting us in getting this right sized. On page two of the report, it's a breakdown of our revenue categories and it provides a nice overview of the general fund sources and where we're anticipating ending the year. Again, we can look at this and we have good data because we're looking not only at the month of October for that estimate on the actual, but we can look into November a bit and see where we're at. So property tax is right where we want to see it. It's under by fifty-five thousand dollars, but we set this budget amount slightly over the levy so that we can collect prior year unpaid taxes and, and that. So we want to be close. There's kind of a sweet spot of where you want that to be. That's right about where we want it. Sales and use tax, I don't know if you remember, but back last spring, we were down pretty considerably one month. Things are over, you know, it's over just slightly, but I'm pleased with where that is. I think that it's not only good for the city, but it's good for businesses in our city because it shows that spending's happening with the economy at the pace that we anticipated. You know, we've acknowledged that inflation is driving prices a bit higher, but to see that where it is shows that the economy isn't changing much. Things are strong. Wanted to point out that the line where you see charges for goods and services, that line can be a little bit elusive because it's not super well defined with that description. It's a broad range. It encompasses revenue from the park district, from recreation and activity fees, plan review, inspection fees. And our inter-fund charges for indirect cost recovery, you'll notice that it's over. Part of that over budget amount is because we missed billing SMPD, the park district, for one bill last year that we realized this year. So that's part of it. But we've also had some plan and development review fees that were over budget as I looked into the detail of that. And so that's why that line is, well, you know, rather considerably for our budget, almost a quarter of a million dollars over. So some of the other areas that are down, we've talked about before. But that's what that is. On page five, just briefly, the comparison of general fund revenues and, and expenditure shows where we're at in the month of October compared to those prior fiscal years there at the top and for revenue and at the bottom for expenditures. I like to look at that simply because it shows kind of where on the revenue side we're increasing, you know, that property tax amount, it goes up one percent, doesn't increase a whole lot, but you can see where that pace is. The same with sales tax and some of the others. And then on our expenditures for October of 2023 compared to those prior years, you can take a look and see where some of the reductions happened and where some of our savings that we're realizing through just really tightening our belt and watching the, how we're spending in the general fund to make sure that we come out or came out to where we're at this year. On page seven, again, as I pointed out last month, this represents our estimated fund balances across all funds. So the proprietary, the proprietary funds, the general fund and everything, what we want to see on that column for the estimated fund balance is a positive number. A good thing, all of those are positive. Some of the changes between beginning fund and ending fund are certainly going down. That's result in some of the particularly the capital funds that we're doing work, we're spending money. That's what you want to see, that change in fund balance sometimes because we're doing our job and getting the work done. But overall, I think we can be pleased with where we're seeing the estimated fund balances. Those of course include the council's reserve policy as part of that. At the bottom of page seven, we're providing an update on FTE as we do every month now. On the general fund, there, there was a 1.0 increased vacancy in the general fund from the prior month. And that's the vacant administrative services director position. Open general fund positions stand at seven point O FTE and the other funds at four. So that's giving a citywide across all funds total vacancy of eleven FTE. So some of those positions, as we know, are being redefined or changed or eliminated as you adopted the 2024 budget. So we also have the benefit now of being able to look forward into what we're expecting in 2024. But all things considered, I'm pleased with where our finances are winding up the year. And we'll certainly spend a little bit more time with the financial reports for November and particularly December and the beginning of next year to take a look at how we ended up 2023. We're certainly, you know, processing pretty good sized accounts payable runs right now to get some projects paid out and things processed that we want to realize in this fiscal year because the budget, of course, for our purposes, once that year turns, it, we leave a brief open period, but then it goes into the 2024 fiscal year. So that's the report. I'm happy to answer any questions you.
Can you remind me why we budget our detention and corrections contract under the city manager?
I think that's just historically been where it is, as opposed to maybe being in police. That's, we could certainly look at moving that if that's something where council wanted it. I think we also have some of the public defense contracts in there.
All legal is.
So I think it's been associated with that. I don't think there's, as far as I'm, I know there's no reason that we have to prescribe from, say, the state auditor, but it certainly keeps it separate from police a bit.
Yeah, I just, I, I think about what it costs to run a police department.
Sure.
Right? Or what it costs to do public safety. Right? And so I just would, I would assume we would pull that if we did that analysis, but I just wanted to ask the question.
I mean, it's a good point because those, the costs associated with that aren't directly from the city manager's office, certainly.
City manager is not administering the contract correctly, police department is.
Well. And with help from municipal court, absolutely. The day-to-day operation administration of that, of, of that contract, we have a great assistance from the court administrator as well and reviewing, particularly in reviewing the billings that come directly over. Because they know, they know who's in custody, who's not in custody. So there's some reconciliation there within, within municipal court. More so than police department, actually.
I'll talk with the city manager and we can look at it if we want to show that in a different way, we certainly can. There's no reason why we can't. It's not going to change the.
Yeah, I certainly understand, you know.
Yeah, those bulk of public safety dollars are kind of spread amongst the general fund. And it's sometimes difficult to articulate what it actually costs.
Absolutely.
That way, so perhaps a like an org structure where we have something for public safety, which we cover. PD, etc. But nothing needs to be changed at the moment, just wanted to bring that, sorry.
Not at all.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna interrupt one second. I do have a change to the agenda. I would, I would like to have the council consider, we have a new item under F, the action agenda. Number seven is ordinance twenty eighteen dash one, two, two, three. This is in regards to the appeals of hearing examiner decisions that we talked about in the study session last week. Director Hill would like to present that remotely tonight and that would be considered by council.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now, part, you know, part sir is Jordan Kreppel says a fresh approach about the arts commission.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Tonight I bring to you reappointments for the arts commission. We had three openings or would have three openings as of the end of this year. And the three that are wanting to re-up are going to, wanting to move forward with that. Eleanor Lindquist, Amy Cooper and Larry Harbaugh would be the ones that are wanting to re-up. Amy and Eleanor have both have already done full terms before previously. Larry came on with us midway this year, so would now would start a full term of four years with us. So just looking to move this forward. Any questions?
Right, Donna, anyone set up a public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Anyone in the audience like to speak on these appointments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward the appointments of the renewal of arts commission openings to the January second, twenty twenty-four action agenda for the consideration.
Second.
Right, comments or questions? Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to forward the appointments for renewal of the arts commission openings to January second, twenty twenty-four action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next business item is a resolution for cybersecurity grant acceptance, IT systems to ensure to match Franklin as details.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm here to present a grant acceptance for a state and local cybersecurity grant program we applied for back in August. Essentially, we had our project approved and we will be reimbursed up to sixteen thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars, or essentially ninety percent of, of the project cost. The goal for this would be to get a cybersecurity risk assessment done on our network and our infrastructure. You know, with the goal to come out of it with information of vulnerabilities and areas that we need to improve and implement more just more security and, and try to shore up our, our, our security footprint. So yeah, that's.
All right, Donna, anyone set up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to place resolution number one, three, four, dash, one, one, two, three on the January second, twenty twenty-four council action agenda for the consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Thank you, Max, for tackling this. You never have too much security and this day and age. I mean, every day you're getting a phone call on your phone saying, hey, you won the lottery, come, give me a thousand bucks and I'll give you a big check. But he makes sure we don't do that because we have a little test we have on the table all the time. Thanks a lot, by the way.
Yeah, so it's.
No before.
Yeah.
All right.
I want to thank, thank Max for being proactive in this, in this field, in this realm. This is really important to the security of the entire city. You know, with the services we offer and then the data that we collect, it's really important we protect that from those that want to, you know, breach our, breach our firewalls and, and our system. So this will give us a better, I guess, analysis of where we, where we lie in that and ensure that some of the measures that Max has brought to the city Shelton are continuing to move forward and keep us secure.
Do we do this with Macecom? Have a chance?
No, this is, yeah. Their IP address network won't, won't be touched unless they want to get involved.
Who does the audit?
So we're. No, actually, this will be a third-party vendor, Critical Insights, who we are looking at to get the assessment performed. They're pretty well-known in the industry for, for doing that type of thing. We already have had the contracts pushed forward, so we're looking at moving forward with that.
We just started the entrance conference for three-year accountability audit at Macecom this morning. One of the big components of it is cybersecurity. And anytime we have cyber incidents required to be reported to the SAO. That's such new. Yeah, so I guess my only thing would be to engage SAO at some point, maybe, to this process. I know how much fun that probably would be. But having some experience with this and the costs that are involved in PII related leak or something like that, that would kill us in some cases, insurance is going to cover it if we haven't been doing the right thing long. Like if you haven't been taking your no before tests.
So all, all of that is part of trying to be, you know, meet those cybersecurity insurance requirements, this being one of them. Remember the last time that it happened within this network, but yeah, all things to really help us move forward.
I just recently watched a, a news report that government agencies are, they try to attack them hundreds of times a day, every day. It's just constant, so very important. All right. We have a motion and a second to place resolution number one, three, zero, four, one, one, two, three on the January second, twenty twenty-four council action agenda item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now it's Aaron's turn. He has information for us about angle side of reservoir, reservoir capacity upgrades.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council, city manager, thank you for letting me be here. Many of the projects that I'm going to be bringing forward to you guys, a lot of them are grant related. This is one of those projects. I'm sure the council is aware of some of our water pressure and dead storage issues. This project is really central, of which we've been awarded 1.8 million dollars to address some of those issues, at least take the initial stab. BHC is the consultant. We basically are utilizing them all off of our on-call roster with the intent that there's going to be some piping improvements as well as some electrical improvements in our booster pump stations as well as our well sites to attack the pressure as well as the fire flow and the dead storage issue. So what I have before you is obviously information at this point, but this will be covered under the grant, some design, this basically takes us from initial concept all the way to final design, final construction and buy-off. That's why the number's a little bit higher, but again, this is going to be covered under the grant with the intent that we're going to try to construct something this summer with these monies. So basically it outlines, it identifies the geotechnical work that we need to do, the surveying work as well as the, the civil engineering work that we need to do. Again, covered under the grant at this point. So if there's any questions, we obviously will be bringing this forward again. But again, to address some of those water-related issues that are candidly our top priority at this point, so.
All right, Donna, anyone set up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? Do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution number one, three, zero, six, dash, one, two, two, three onto the council's action agenda for the January second meeting for additional consideration.
Again.
All right, comments or questions? This is a project that's has to do with our water flow and storage issues that would, could possibly stop us from building homes, correct?
Potentially, yes, sir.
This is something that is the beginning of a long project. Not only this, we'll be looking at some storage here in the future as well.
Looking to place some more reservoirs to help deal with that issue. And candidly, you guys, that gets really expensive really fast. So do, trying to do that due diligence to get this addressed and help us. We have been in contact and have been talking with DOH with regard to our issues. And I think we have a very positive direction.
This is, and these funds are from the director appropriation last year. Our state delegation assisted us with, we obviously or not obviously, but we did ask for more funds to, to pursue a, a new reservoir and the entire, to kind of re, redo essentially, rebuild that entire angle site pressure zone. We're fortunate enough to get 1.8 million dollars to put into a fix that has been identified by our engineering staff and our engineering consultants that gets us kind of, you know, the first, if not first and second steps to increasing that storage capacity so we can meet fire flow and IFC standards, but also provide water capacity to residential construction on the south side of town. So these are some improvements and they're not, they're not improvements that won't be utilized moving forward as well. This is, this is an investment kind of the baseline that will continue to be utilized as this, as this pressure zone, maybe a new reservoir and other upgrades are made in the future too, so that they're not just a one-off and it won't be used in the future. These will, these will continue to be utilized as that pressure zones redeveloped and built out.
Any other comments or questions?
Water is life and we need to protect it and make sure there's a big supply for, for us here in the city. So thank you so much for your work.
All right. I guess, you know, the only other comment on this is, you know, three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars in construction management services. This is just another kind of plug for general fund resources. We could, we could do these things in-house if we had staffing to do it, but when we don't, that's, that's what it costs. Yeah, so performance of the grant is key in ensuring the project gets delivered for the requirements of the grant. You know, we have one deep staff in a lot of places to do this and managing multiple projects, which is not necessarily possible. So totally necessary. I wish we had more depth of the staff to, to handle it in-house, but.
I think you'll see some head nods out here. Yeah, just for, for council's information, we have, we have advertised actually two positions within engineering department, although we have one to fill, just trying to kind of find, find the possibility of a fit there, one for a city engineer, one for a development review specialist. Remember the exact title, yeah, supervisor and essentially no applications at this point. It's a really tough field within civil engineering. So as council membership just mentioned, we, in order to meet the needs of our community, meet the criteria that these grants have placed on us, we have to go for outside services. And, and those outside services are taxed at this point too. We're lucky enough to have some consultants that are willing to work for us. They're tight, timelines aren't what necessarily we want, but we're pushing them and asking them to service the best of their abilities so we can put the money into the ground, if you will.
Right. Okay, we have a motion and a second to place resolution number one, three, zero, six, dash, one, two, two, three on the council action agenda on January second, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Will Mike's back up again? He has a reservation about 2023 budgets.
Thank you. I promise this is it for the budget tonight, but the 2023 supplemental budget, it's our second supplemental. It serves largely, as I went into detail last time, to clean up some of our funds, deobligate some for projects that aren't happening. to clean up some of our funds, de-obligate some for projects that aren't, um, happening. There have been no changes since the last presentation.
All right, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? We have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, five, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, five, dash, one, zero, two, three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, five, dash, one, zero, two, three, as presented.
All right, comments or questions? Thank you. We have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, five, dash, one, zero, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. We have an ordinance related to a low-impact development principle and facilities, public works, stormwater technician Kenny Obergast details.
Good evening, council, mayor and deputy mayor. Um, I brought to you on the last break of the reading, the low-end, low-impact development code changes and additions. And again, to reiterate that, it is to make low-impact development for, new development sites and even in some cases redevelopment sites, the preferred and commonly used approach. And that basically attacks the stormwater pollution that is caused by existing development that needs to be retrofitted before it even happens. So it's a preventative correction, if you will. Nothing has changed since the previous presentation.
All right. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? Right. We have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, seven, dash, one, one, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, seven, dash, one, one, two, three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the Shelton municipal code related to low-impact development principles and facilities.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, seven, dash, one, one, two, three, as presented.
Sick. Right, comments or questions?
Just comment. Thank you for what you're doing to get the stormwater program off the ground. It's great.
Thank you.
And comment on just, yes, thank you for not just bringing the water and keeping it clean for all us and for all the futures in motion.
Right. We have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, seven, dash, one, one, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, Kenny is not leaving, so he must be up again. And oh, he is.
Yes, sir.
Um, also, on the last regular council meeting, I presented the acceptance or, acceptance of an ecology grant. This is a stormwater capacity grant, so biannual grant. Uh, they have updated the dollar amount for us for this binding to a hundred thirty thousand. That grant is retroactive and actually it's any, any expenditures that will be covered under the grant can actually be backdated to July first of this year. So that grant itself helps us out in many ways, uh, for, paying Mason Conservation District for the public education outreach for our stormwater permit requirements and that one aspect of the permit. It can go to capital improvements and, uh, also equipment directly related to stormwater. For instance, a portion of the camera for the storm department was utilized that fund. Looking to re-accept the next binding this grant. It's a non-match, non-city match grant. That's the best part.
Right. Thank you, Donna. Anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone want to speak? We have a reading of resolution number one, three, zero, two, dash, one, one, two, three.
Resolution number one, three, zero, two, dash, one, one, two, three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting a stormwater capacity grant from the Department of Ecology and authorizing the city manager to sign the funding agreement and other related documents as needed.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Staff recommends the motion. I move to adopt resolution number thirteen, oh, two, dash, one, one, two, three as presented.
All right, comments or questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number one, three, zero, two, dash, one, one, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, we're back to project manager, Aaron Nix, has information for us about well one project.
Thank you, guys. Again, I appreciate that. Um, uh, we discussed this at your last council meeting. Um, this is with regard to the well one pressurization project, of which we have a pre-con scheduled for January ninth. Expect construction shortly after that, um, moving forward. I'm not going to great detail because we discussed this before, but basically this is construction management services that, uh, Grayne Osborne will provide. As this is my, one of my first projects, I'm really going to shadow and oversee kind of that component of it so that, like you discussed, uh, in the future, us potentially taking that on, depending on requirements and those kinds of things, um, just to kind of, not scrutinize, but just be there and observe and make sure that, that what's being said is being assessed, uh, those types of things. So, um, with that, if there's any questions, you guys, uh, please feel free, again, pre-con on the ninth, with construction shortly thereafter with, and will be done probably early summer, I suspect.
Right, Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? We have a reading of resolution number one, three, zero, one, dash, one, one, two, three.
Resolution number one, three, zero, one, dash, one, one, two, three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve supplemental agreement number four to the professional services agreement with Grayne Osborne Incorporated titled Well One Pipeline Pressurization Project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to pre-resolution number one, three, zero, one, dash, one, one, two, three, as presented.
Second. All right, comments or questions? All right, we have motion, a second to adopt resolution number one, three, zero, one, dash, one, one, two, three, and presented. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. Next item is a contract for city prosecution services and our city manager will give that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so today I'm bringing to you a contract with Gunderson Law Firm, for contract prosecutorial services for the, uh, Shelton Municipal Court. Uh, no changes have been made since the briefing on December fifth. Uh, your approval of the, uh, contract, uh, we'll execute that most likely tomorrow or this week and Mr. Gunderson would start, uh, service on January one, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? Just to ask them to say that. Do we have a motion?
Um, I move to approve the contract with Gunderson Law Firm for prosecute, prosecute service, and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
I just wanted to thank Mark for, um, and the judge who's here, um, for working with these folks and for getting the really good deal.
All right. Do you have any other comments or questions? We have a motion, a second to approve the contract with Gunderson Law Firm for prosecutorial services and authorize city manager to sign on behalf of the city. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. Mark has another item. Uh, public defense grant acceptance.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, again, uh, the city received notice from the office of, uh, public defense that, uh, we received a two-year grant, thirty-nine thousand dollars in twenty-four and thirty-nine thousand dollars in twenty-five to, uh, offset costs for indigent public defense, uh, through municipal court. I really want to thank, um, court administrator Diane Smolinski, Judge Greer and the staff down there for, uh, getting this grant completed and submitted, uh, on time and accurately so we could receive these funds to help offset these costs to the city of Shelton.
All right. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? Jordan's going to kill me tonight. We have a reading of resolution number one, three, zero, three, dash, one, one, two, three.
Resolution number one, three, zero, three, dash, one, one, two, three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting a grant from the Washington State Department of Public Defense and authorizing the city manager to sign the funding agreement and other related documents as needed.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one, three, zero, three, dash, one, one, two, three, as presented.
Comments or questions? Oh, sorry, comments or questions? All right, we have motion, a second to approve resolution number one, three, zero, three, dash, one, one, two, three, as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. Our last action item is an ordinance regarding appeals. We're hearing examiner decision, community economic development director Jay Hill has detailed, but I'm assuming it's going to be, oh, no, he's online. He's online, yeah. That's right, you didn't say that, didn't you? Has details for us, uh. Good evening, Jay.
Hi there. Uh, I am staying home, so I don't get anybody ill. Uh, I hope that's appreciated. Um, but anyway, uh, I'll begin. Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Uh, so this is ordinance twenty eighteen, dash, uh, one, two, two, three. Um, the, this goes back to the, briefing last week at the study session where we talked about, we had discovered there were some inconsistencies, uh, with how appeals were, uh, identified throughout our code. Uh, some of, the appeals of hearings examiner decisions went to city councils, some went to superior court, uh, inconsistent review timelines, inconsistent review procedures, et cetera. Um, so we, uh, very quickly prepared an ordinance to address these issues, um, just so we have, uh, very clear and streamlined and consistent processes for all applicants and all appellant coming forward. We have a couple of, uh, large subdivisions, conditional use permits, et cetera. Um, and, uh, these land use decisions all deserve to be treated exactly the same and councils' expectations of how they should be issued, uh, approved or reviewed or appealed, uh, should be consistent as well. So, um, we may still have more work to do in these sections. These were sections that we identified and, and we, we noted that there are other sections of the code that also need some cleanup. We'll probably be back, uh, next year with an ordinance to address the rest of them, but this was, uh, the, the really important ones that we identified first. Um, again, stream, uh, streamlining consistency and, uh, it's very, uh, uncommon for city councils to be the review and appeal authority for hearings examiner decisions, um, or, or any decisions, uh, administrative or quasi-judicial. So this is, um, just kind of becoming more consistent with, uh, practices across the state. Uh, so that being said, happy to answer any questions about this ordinance and, uh, recommend its approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? We have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, eight, dash, one, two, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, eight, dash, one, two, two, three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapters two point three six and sections two, zero, point four, four, point zero, four, zero, two, zero, point five, zero, point zero, four, zero, and two, one, point six, four, point zero, nine, zero, and repealing sections one, nine, point three, four, point zero, six, zero, and two, zero, point five, zero, point zero, five, zero, of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to appeals of land use decisions.
Wow. Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two, zero, one, eight, dash, one, two, two, three, as presented.
All right, comments or questions?
I just wanted to say that we should not, as a legislative body, we should keep the powers of government separate and this should be more judicial and quasi-judicial. So, uh, I think this is a good decision.
We have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number two, zero, one, eight, dash, one, one, two, three, and to waive the three-touch rule. All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries. Mark, GFC manager.
Yeah, thanks tonight. Uh, thank you. I appreciate the council taking action on that tonight. As, um, was demonstrated last week in our study session, um, the, the issues that that may, may bring up, um, to the council and, um, moving forward, I think that we have a, a clear process. We obviously have some more cleanup to do, but that, this gets us in the right direction for, um, these quasi-judicial processes moving forward. Um, I appreciate the discussion about the National Property Maintenance Code and the height limits, uh, last week as well. Uh, staff will continue, uh, providing information to council to, um, answer the questions you had following up the study session last week. Uh, you got copies of the International Property Maintenance Code, the IPMC, if you will, um, to review and please provide any comments, questions, uh, as you work through that. Uh, we'll develop, uh, another study session in twenty twenty-four to further address the IPMC as well as the, the height limit discussion, uh, will be coming back to council. I think we got clear and, uh, consensus from council on where to move with that. So, um, I appreciate, uh, appreciate your efforts there. As council member McDowell mentioned, um, council member Gutierrez, Sherman and McDowell myself visited Hope Village in Longview on Monday. Uh, I think it's a worthwhile trip to see what kind of, uh, facility, uh, can be and is offered in a community like that. They're bigger than us, obviously a little over thirty thousand people, but, uh, contracting with the Salvation Army to provide what can be referred to as a navigation or mitigation site. They refer to it more as transition, transitional housing site, but, um, but ve-very impressive, uh, what they've been able to, uh, accomplish down there for, uh, for their homeless communities. Um, we continue to work with our, our subcommittee as well as, uh, local service providers to find opportunities to, uh, to find solutions, um, in our community. Um, we have released a, uh, press release, uh, for formulation of a comp plan steering committee. Uh, so we're seeking five members from the general public, uh, that would be interested in serving on this comp plan steering committee. So, maybe council members that have free Tuesday nights, um, moving forward would be interested in doing something like that. Uh, no, but, uh, so we're looking for a, a, yeah, a broad spectrum, uh, of our community. We want, uh, we want to represent, you know, any and all demographics, including maybe some younger folks that, that would like to be engaged in this process. Um, I call it our roadmap. Um, the city's roadmap, if you will, but it incorporates how the city is going to develop and move forward and, uh, land use processes that incorporates our, uh, our comprehensive plans for, uh, sewer and parks and stormwater as well. So really important process, um, will be a little over a year to, um, to complete. But again, um, it's our guiding document. It's what sets the tone, uh, for the city of Shelton moving forward. Uh, we'll certainly be utilizing, um, previous efforts like the two thousand fifteen downtown visioning plan and incorporating those uh, as appropriate. So we don't lose, um, those efforts that were put into, uh, the community previously. We've, we've heard that oftentimes that it's just going to be another plan that sits on the shelf. Uh, well, no, it's not going to be another plan that sits on the shelf. We're going to take these other plans and actually incorporate those as appropriate too. So we make sure these, these are documents that live on and they're incorporated as comprehensive. We have another opportunity on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to serve, uh, uh, a term there to assist our, um, our Parks and Recreation Department and guiding the, uh, guiding staff and guiding council and decisions there. So we're taking applications or letters of interest for that as well. Um, this morning, um, I think Mayor mentioned Jordan, uh, tracking up, she's probably a little delirious, but she was in, I think before five thirty this morning, uh, starting our employee appreciation breakfast and putting a lot of work. Our, we have a great wellness committee within the city that puts a lot of effort into, uh, activities and events here, uh, for our employees, um, as well as other staff that, you know, dedicate their time. So we had breakfast in, in here this morning, uh, gave out some awards. Um, the first, uh, annual shelties were given away today. So, um, had some fun with that and recognized the unique, um, folks that we have working for us as well as, uh, employees of the year and, um, happy to announce that Jason Dos was, uh, nominated and approved as employee of the year at Steve Shelton. And then the first time we've, um, we created a supervisor of the year as well. So, uh, Leander Sharp was nominated and, uh, supervisor of the year this, uh, this morning as well in a, fairly, you know, informal ceremony, but, uh, it was a lot of fun.
Did you think of all those yourself?
Pardon me?
Did you think of all those awards, the shelting awards?
We had some help from staff.
Those were great.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we had some, we had some, there's, there's, there's other staff that helped out as well, yeah. Um, appreciated again wellness committee, um, making some decisions. There were a lot of nominations. There were nominations made by peers throughout the city. So, if you will, you were, um, the guy for the award, if you will. So if you're the foodie of the, of the, you know, of the organization. So, um, we were able to recognize individuals that had maybe unique interests or talents as well, maybe not such a clean office or maybe really clean office, things like that. So, um, a bit of fun this morning, uh, but a long day. um, a bit of fun this morning, uh, but a long day, right, Jordan? Uh, happy to announce the Mace County Historical Society has received, uh, a grant, uh, three thousand dollars. We're going to, um, put that into the building to assist with some maintenance and not keep on the building. Most likely some restoration on the, on the old windows down there. So working with the historical society here um, to get some of that work done, so, done. So we really appreciate the partnership, uh, with them and their interest in preserving, uh, the city's structure down on, uh, railroad. Uh, the last thing, I guess, is just the three council members, we know that, um, public service, um, is, is a selfless act, right? We, we do that because love for our community and, and interest in, in providing the services that, that in the community that we live in. Um, it's often thankless. I know we've been thanked sometimes, but it's, um, but often, you know, always receive those. So tonight I want to thank you, um, for the time, the effort, um, that you've put in here at the city for the last four years. Um, I know that you're not going away. You're individuals that are dedicated to this community as well. And so just serving on council doesn't necessarily mean that you're riding off in a sunset. You're here and you've, you've got your roots set here. Um, so I'm going to appreciate the relationship that we built my time serving under you as city manager beforehand as department head and whatever other duties that have been assigned over time. And thank you for the opportunity you've provided me. Um, on behalf of our staff, I think we've built, um, a great working relationship between staff and council. Um, we really appreciate the open, honest dialogue that we've received, um, particularly in the study session format. I think it's made these meetings, um, function a lot more efficiently, if you will, because we're hopefully providing you the information that you need to make the decisions moving forward in the best interest of the community. So um, I want to keep that open dialogue moving, moving forward. So, um, we'll have opportunity here in a few minutes to go into executive session and, uh, hear about how we can, um, continue to provide that. I can continue to provide that and serve, uh, serve the council moving forward to the best of my abilities and and meet the goals and expectations of the council. So again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for city manager?
Oh, can I reiterate, reiterate my gratefulness and my gratitude, my thanks to the whole staff. Um, also to note Judge Greer and how, um, the Shelton Court is considered a, um, a nice court to be in. Yeah, I witnessed it personally and so is, uh, Councilmember McDowell. We, we watched Judge Greer work in the, in the court system and thought, wow, this is a really, um, really worthwhile program that Judge, the judge is running and, um, he's got just so many things set up that, uh, little things that, uh, make the Shelton Court special in this whole area. So I, and, uh, also each and every individual employee of the city who takes that hometown discount to stay in Shelton and work in Shelton is much appreciated and you're all superstars. And thank you so much for working for this community and in this community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, at this time, public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, anyone sent a public comment?
Yes, we have Mary Eagleson.
I'm loud, so. Councilmembers, Mayor. Mayor pro temp. A lot of people may not realize who are watching tonight that this is going to be new faces starting next year. And as the citizen of this town, I want to thank all of you, but there's three of you. James, thank you for taking the time to be on city council at, help the city, even running a business. Petra, same to you. Work hard for, any work hard for the chamber. Thank you very much. Kathy McDowell. My friend. Eight years. People don't understand the dedication and the time that it takes to be on city council and devote eight years of service to this town and to the city council. And the assembly before this. So thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Very, very much. It's a lot of hard work to all of you. Thank you also for the rest of you that will still be here for watching, for watching. All right, thank you for your time and for all you've done for the city. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, anyone else sign a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one person on Zoom and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Marinesco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. My name is Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. Suicide is a serious public health issue in the United States. Between two thousand and two thousand twenty one, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention reported that suicide rates increased by nearly forty percent. And suicide was responsible for close to fifty thousand deaths. One death every eleven minutes. In twenty twenty one, suicide was among the top nine leading causes of death for people's age ten to sixty four and the second leading cause of death for people's aged ten to fourteen and twenty to thirty four. By raising awareness, reducing stigmas about suicide and encouraging hope through action, we can help reduce suicide rates and suicidal attempts. There are several common myths associated with suicide. A person must have a mental illness to die by suicide. Only trained professionals can help people experiencing suicidal thoughts. Talking about suicide increases the chances that a person may act on it. People who talk about suicide are just seeking attention. Suicide occurs without warning. People who take their own lives are selfish. Suicides can't be prevented. When a person is suffering in silence, they need to know that there are alternative solutions. Resources can help individuals understand that they are not alone. Each of us can help prevent suicide by fostering a sense of connection, checking in with friends and family, creating a space of laughter, honoring each other on a day-to-day basis, creating a safe environment and promoting healthy connections. If you see someone suffering or notice a change in a person's demeanor or appearance, reach out and ask if they need help. Resources that are available to help people in need are Cedar Sinai Community Resource, CDC Suicide Prevention Resources, Lifeline, which you can call or text nine eight eight or by emailing nine eight eight lifeline dot org, Suicide Prevention Resource Center and the Trevor Project. I bring this to your attention tonight because I lost my oldest brother to suicide in December of two thousand two. My hope is that provide, providing resources and information, no one will have to suffer a loss like this in their lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up, Donna?
No one else, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? All right. The council will now adjourn to an executive session to review the performance of a public employee as allowed by RCW forty two dot thirty dot one ten one G. The council will be in the executive session for thirty minutes and will return at, um, seven twenty two. All right.
Two twenty, yeah.
Seven twenty eight.
Seven twenty eight.
Regular meeting is called back to order. Does the council have any new items for discussion?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Merry Christmas. Uh, you know, we, we did attend this staff appreciation day today and it was great to see everybody and, uh, you know, we spoke a little bit with five minutes' notice, but, um, I appreciate it, all, all staff and everything that they do. And also I wanted to say, I didn't say that, you know, I don't think there's one person I've talked to in the last five years that's ever complained to me about working here at the city. So, you know, that's a big deal too. So. All right. Anybody else have any new items for discussion? This meeting is adjourned.
Well, can I say something?
Oh, shh.
I want to thank Kathy.
Sure.
For introducing me to this and having asked me to come up then one other time. And I really I'm sorry that I haven't done that in a long time, but I wish I could. Because you better understand how much you care how hard you work the time that you're giving of yourselves to make sure that this um, that I'm in real love. This way it will be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Right.
I don't worry anyways.
Yeah, she is.
Right, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty four at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirty P M.
Well, happy new year.